Ladies and gentlemen, let's call the meeting to order. Bob Hill, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Bob. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to request a time or establish a time to bring a concern to the board, which I don't see anyone? Staff or any commissioners, are there any changes that you're aware of that we should be addressing? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And we have our consent agenda items that are all in our packet. Everybody's had an opportunity to review them before we go with the consent agenda. Are there any questions or concerns regarding anything in there? Staff, is there anything that you would like to address or change before we go with the consent agenda?
No.
Then we'll, without objection, we'll approve the consent agenda as printed in our packets. Item number seven is our routine business, and the first item of business is the approval of the claims. The chair would entertain a motion regarding such. So moved by Falcon, seconded by Miller. Discussion, questions? Any staff clarifications or comments? Stephanie?
I just want to point out that on your desk this morning, there were some corrections to the claims that Sarah provided for everyone's review. I also wanted to note that we have one additional claim that we're going to have to pay outside of the claim cycle. It's the check that's going to go to the state for the spring workshop next week, and I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that one as well. They're both included on your desk.
Pardon?
They're both included on your desk.
Yeah. Commissioners, any other questions regarding claims? If not, secretary, please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We'll move on to our department head reports. Dick, we'll start on this end this week. Mr. Burke, our highway superintendent. Good morning.
Good morning. Just a couple of things. One, we're going to be sending out the notice to bidders for a backhoe loader that was budgeted for in 2014, and we're also getting the process started to switch our radios over to digital frequencies. And snowing again. Other than that, I think there's items future on the agenda that I have just soon wait for that.
Sure.
Unless there's any questions or anything.
Okay.
Thanks.
If we think of something between now and then, we'll catch you later. Sheriff Stanwick. Okay, Marty, how about equalization, Mr. Exess?
I'm really here too, but I'm just.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just to bring you up to date on the assessment notices and appeals, we have had our meetings last week. We met on Wednesday with the small towns, and that went very well, and it was well-attended. And then Thursday, we met with all of the township people, and that was also well-attended. I think we have one packet of books that needs to be picked up, so it's a great connection point to get all of the paperwork and information to all of the boards. The office is relatively quiet. We've been doing a lot of educating and explaining and working with people, but not a lot of appeals yet. We have done some recommendations to the local boards, so right now, everything that we have on our desks will be handled at local boards, and we're recommending changes that they have to approve. And I always think it's a good thing to give this initial job to the local boards so that they can keep track of what we're recommending and changing, but there's very few. There's a few corrections that need to be corrected at local boards. We've had some ag land people in and WRP. We're looking at some of those and looking at changing some crop soils to grass on the WRP's. Legislation, we had a very interesting bill initiated by Pennington County. It was House Bill 1097, and they were reworking the criteria to be considered ag. And Pennington County is a minimum of 40 acres, and they were suggesting that the minimum income from farming pursuits would be changed to $1,000. And the east side of the state was not real happy with that because anybody living on five acres could probably qualify by selling one calf, cow, 4-H, calf, whatever. So they went in and amended the original bill, and they changed it to mandatory 20 acres with $1,000 income and be raising farm products. So then the east side came, became upset again, and Brookings County was used as an example because we have over 250 parcels of land in Brookings County that is under 20 acres, and they are farming for a living. So the way they amended it would have changed the actual farmers. And so this has all been placed on, it's been tabled, and it will be heard again at the Ag Task Force meetings this summer, and I think they're going to be looking for input on the impact of any of these changes. Right now, it's a done deal, but we'll see it again. It's a Pennington County issue, and we would just like them to bite the bullet and fix it out there, but they tried that and it didn't work, so they thought they'd change something statewide, and they have to realize that east and west South Dakota are totally different, so. And I had contacted all of our local legislators on the first bill, saying that anybody with a small acreage could then qualify for ag. And then when they amended it, then I got on the horn again and said, "This isn't correct either." So now you're affecting the real farmers, so. Any questions on that?
Joyce, you had sent out some dates. What do you think we're going to need, just looking at calendars as far as?
Right now, I would say the one day.
And what?
Stephanie, is it the 15th? Wasn't the 15th? Fifteenth.
Okay, yeah, that's the one we have now, so that you don't think it'll?
I don't think so, but I think we left, we took the 15th, starting at nine, and then we left the 22nd open during your regular meeting.
Okay.
If we need to research something or bring something back.
So we'll do that one day, and then maybe the afternoon of the second day? Okay.
I think so.
Okay, didn't know if there's any. I just wanted to make sure I got it on my calendars. Well, thank you.
Right now, it's looking like that, but I'll do this. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll be back.
Thanks, Joyce. We'll go down the line. I see our county weed supervisor, Mr. Eggerberg, is with us. Gary, did you have anything you wanted to bring before the board?
I'm just here with the approval of the COVID.
Okay. Mr. Hill? Community development, emergency management, weather watcher?
Hepburn, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Hepburn's up a good point. The last thing I was going to talk about is we do have National Weather Service Storm Spotting Class scheduled for May 1st. It'll be cosponsored between the City of Brookings, their fire department, and us, and it'll be held over at the east fire station. Now, moving backwards, the Brookings County Planning Commission Vice Chairman, Rob Loomis, has announced that he has resigned immediately from the planning commission. And I wanted the board to be the first to hear that, and we'll start steps immediately to find a replacement for him, but it may go, it may go a little bit without one. And he does thank the commission for the chance of serving on the board, and that he had, he's enjoyed his time there, but personal issues came up where he has to, has to move on, so. Last week in February, I attended a gas pipeline advisory committee in Washington, DC, and the last day of that committee meeting was a safety management system workshop, which was probably more interesting than the rest of the, rest of everything, and quite, quite good meeting on, on the industry's safety management systems and some of the stuff we could probably use locally. We held our zoning meeting this month on March 6th, which is a Thursday instead of a Tuesday, and it was rescheduled because of the township meetings, which is all on the first Tuesday in March. We've got nuisance issues ongoing. Some of the commissioners may have received phone calls recently, and we're moving ahead with it, and Department of Environment and Natural Resources is also moving on with those in our office, the deputy state's attorney, or the state's attorney's office, and D E and R is all working together, and we'll keep the board informed as much as we can as it goes along.
Bob, the call that I did receive that I got hold of you on, how do you deal with, I mean, is that our problem, low water pressure? I mean, where do you, where do you draw that line of being a nuisance, or yes, maybe it's a, it's a living condition issue, but where can we step in and, I mean, I understand some of that stuff is by ordinance, but such as low water pressure, running the water?
On one like that, we immediately send it to Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
They can deal with that?
To a certain extent, they, I mean, and then there's also, and the sheriff's got a good book over there. I'd recommend all the commissioners swing by sometime and get it. It's called Renters' Rights. A renter in South Dakota's got so many rights, and it's all explained in state law and, and what you can do and what you can't do. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to quote, but the sheriff does a good job of passing that out to people, and we pass it out for them when, when we have issues such as this. But we're, we're working on the issue. We understand you're getting phone calls. We're getting phone calls, and we're, we're working it as fast as we can, and.
Is, Bob, is it realtors' right or renters' rights?
Renters' rights.
Okay.
Versus, oh, you can't hear me? Oh, okay. Versus, it's, you know, since we're on the topic, it's renters' rights to try to keep slum, slum lords from taking advantage of people, so. Okay, I had a emergency management training when I did get back from my travels, and it was in Huron and Pierre, and that went well. Lake Ponce's siren update. While I was in Pierre, I got an email, we, Lake Ponce is going to end up with four sirens sooner or later. One of them's going to be in Brookings County at the state park. It appears that some upgrades may have to be made through our 911 board over at the police station, so the next step right now is for me to schedule a meeting with our 911 section, South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks, and I would like to have a county commissioner involved at that stage when we, when we do start to meet, because anytime you're, you're dealing with a topic like that, the, you know, 911, you got the part that's for dispatch locally, and then you got the part, this would be dispatched way out of, out of our area, although south part of Lake Ponce is our, so, our range, so we'll keep you updated on that, and.
Bob, I have a question on that. If, if there's three of those sirens that are in Hamlin County, or two would be in Hamlin County, and one would be in, or what?
Three would be in Hamlin County. Well, one would be in Kingsbury County, two in Hamlin County, and one in Brookings County.
Okay. And I guess the question I have is the liability and responsibility of, should somebody in Brookings be setting a tone off in another county? And I know that Kingsbury deals with here in dispatch, and I know that Hamlin deals with Watertown Dispatch. So you got three dispatch centers. I would hate to see we set our siren off and they don't set theirs off. I would think whoever controls the most sirens would be the one that would be likely to tone out. I mean, instead of everybody trying to figure out how to do it, I don't know, maybe if you could work with communications in Watertown, rather than everybody paying the expense to have to tie into their siren, maybe it's better to have all four sirens on the same dispatch area.
That's why I feel we at least need to shut down and sort it out with the 911 people. The emergency managers from all three counties and Game, Fish and Parks did sit down together, and now we're to the stage where they're starting to get some quotes. And, but also along the same route, we can't just, we can't just put our head in the sand on this one and say, "Give it to another county," because Oakwood is going to be getting a siren sooner or later also, and that will be our, our total jurisdiction once it gets to Oakwood.
Sure, I understand, but I mean, just.
By all means, I understand.
You see what my issue is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I, I just feel we need to meet, everyone had, discuss the situation, and then we'll go from there.
Have you been contacted by anybody in the Oakwood area?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
And I, I caught, I called her back, and I sent her to the Game, Fish and Parks regional guy who's working on the siren in Ponce, because he's, they're interested in putting one in Oakwood also. It may be a year after the ones in Ponce goes up, but yes, by all means.
I think one of the concerns up there is the popularity of that campground in the summertime, and they've got 100-plus spots up there, and you got all these families camping, and you got bad weather coming, and so.
Well, plus Oakwood Lake Association said the magic word, they've got money.
Wow. I didn't know that. Well, kind of, sorta knew.
They said they had a rich commissioner that was.
Well, the discussion I had with them, and one of the primary concern, yeah, there, it's becoming developed year-round, year-round homes, but the other thing is, the big concern was suppose something hits a park, and how does everybody else that lives around there respond to that kind of a situation?
And I, we had our meeting at Oakwood, and I wasn't doing emergency management two or three years ago, but apparently a big storm did go through and just, just ripped trees all over the place on the, on the actual park. So, see, from a zoning standpoint, I didn't, didn't have nothing to do with me, because it didn't affect any, any actual buildings, but from an emergency manager's standpoint, I can see where, you know, if you got a tent or even a, even a camper that's not anchored down, it could easily blow over. Okay, moving right along, the NACO, there's going to be a NACO webinar later this month, on March 27th, being put on by NACO obviously, and I'm going to be participating on the request of the Jen Horton, who works on the NACO staff, and my part of the webinar will be discussing our zoning ordinance and the steps we used to pass our pipeline ordinance a couple of years ago when this board requested a grant through the federal government. Town strip meetings went well. I received positive feedback on Ms. Dero's presentation. She had a PowerPoint presentation that makes you act like you're Superman flying through the air. We got a PPC, PPCC slash pod meeting on Thursday, this time it'll be held over at the library, if you're interested in coming. March 20th, I got a Rural Fire Protection Association meeting. March 2021, we got a South Dakota State University State Geography Convention, and before you frown on why we would even be talking about a geography convention, that's where we get a lot of our interns, is from the geography department, so I'll, I'll try to at least attend a session or two over there, and. We got a region six meeting in my office. Alan Miller's coming down March 24th. And last but not least, our pre-disaster mitigation plan resolutions have all been signed by the local mayors, and I want to thank them for that, and Sioux Valley Electric, and I'll be preparing that resolution and sending it up, hopefully at the next meeting, we'll, we'll pass our pre-disaster mitigation resolution and bring the bill in to be paid and settle that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it very much. Finance officer, Vicki, you came in. Did you have something you'd like to bring forward?
Morning. I don't have much today, but just to update you, on the self-service terminal has been down at Hy-Vee for getting the decals, and that now is up and running. They were down about two weeks statewide, and then there was remodeling being done at Hy-Vee, so it's been moved out by the red box in the entryway. So I think it's a lot better location, and it's easier for people to find. So just to give you an update on that. And with the township meetings last week, we fielded quite a few different questions in the office with the meetings that they had last week, so we've got that, I think, handled. And I just wanted to thank all my staff for their work with the annual report, and especially Stacy for putting it all together, and she's going to present it today, but everybody gets all the information to her, and she puts it together and does a great job, so I just wanted to thank her for that, and if there's any other questions?
Other questions? Vicki, regarding our ongoing discussion, and this would have been part of my report from the legislative conference, but I did visit with Peter Torvik from NACO regarding the use of credit cards.
Yeah.
And they are working on it. It, it's a complicated situation, but they may have a situation whereby, hopefully for a, at best, maybe a nominal fee, that people can use a card system for paying, and there's a, there's a relatively gracious period that if they pay it within that period of time, it's the same as cash.
Oh, that would be good.
So it would be very convenient for citizens to use the convenience of, of credit cards for paying.
Right. The, I'll get together to a report, but we have credit cards being used all the time, debit and credit, and probably the lowest amount is like a 3% charge. You know, each card is a little bit different, and a debit card has a dollar and a half charge plus another charge, so an average of 3%. And, you know, people still use it, but it would be nice to offer it at a lower rate if we could, so.
It sounded like the early negotiations were something like 90 days is the same as cash?
No, that'd be great.
With very nominal handling fee.
Yeah, because even with the debit card, we do have to charge the fee or, you know, the company does, so that would be great, so.
Maybe, maybe light at the end of the tunnel for our citizens.
Great, yeah.
It's a convenience thing, is what it is.
It is, and I'm really glad that we do have, have the availability for the customers because it's used a lot, so, thanks.
Very good. Any, before she leaves, any questions for, okay? Marty?
Since you're talking about credit cards, Donnie, would that, would that include use in the jail too, that type of credit card for bonding? You know, I have a credit card system now too, but it's probably even more expensive than what Vicki is talking.
I'd have to ask Peter if that's included. I don't know the answer to your question, Marty, but that's a good question.
Okay, because that is somewhat of a convenience for parents that are out of state for their son or daughter.
Yeah, and, and he, he is going to be in South Dakota for, he won't be here for the spring workshop, but he'll be here no later than September for our annual meeting and talk about this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sonya, you're here. Do you have anything beyond the, the topic on the agenda later?
Good morning. Actually, no, I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to stay until 10 o'clock unless you need me to, but I just wanted to inquire as to questions regarding the calendar of events since the first of the year that I submitted through your packet, and if there's anything that needs clarification from that, questions on anything you might see listed?
Board members, you've kind of looked it over. Do you have any questions or anything for Sonya? Okay. Well, thanks for stopping by. If you can't, if you can't stand till.
I have one other question.
Okay.
It has been brought to me following your commission meeting after the summit about your strategic planning or your goal-setting workshop, the 25th. There was some, some things in the newspaper indicating that maybe you would like a 4-H presence, and I've been asked about that. So since I'm here, Stephanie and I have gone back and forth a little bit, but is there a, you know, a request for that? Do you want somebody from the 4-H leaders, or, or was that just kind of a conversation and a comment being made, and it isn't something you're pursuing or need for them to be there?
What's the board's thoughts? Ryan?
Well, I, I just, you know, there are conversations of long-term planning for 4-H and, and that type of thing. I think it'd be important to have some dialogue and some discussion in our strategic planning about that of potential costs, potential investments down, down the road, and I guess that's, for me, I would like to, to have somebody there just for that discussion. What is 4-H looking for in the future? What are they looking for, for programming facilities? What would they like to see? And we take that input and put that into our strategic plan, is what I'd like to see, I guess.
Commissioner Wyeth, excuse me.
Would you like that to be just someone from the extension board?
I guess it doesn't matter to me. I guess, you know, possibly, or.
First, the 25th's been moved, right? We're going to talk about movement, so that date's a while. And then, are you coming the 13th?
Yeah.
This Thursday? Well, I think that'd be a good time we could talk about then. Is that all right? We know you have a date set.
And that's fine. I just, we had a leaders' meeting last night, so it came, was brought back up, and I said I would inquire, and since I was here, I thought, "Why not?"
Sure, sure. I think we, Thursday night, we can probably work around it too.
Would you like for me to stay until your 10 o'clock scheduled appointment regarding the summary?
That's entirely up to you. If you've got things you need to do, we understand.
Well, I have to be somewhere, and I'm not ready to go there yet, so.
Okay, well, and we understand that.
But if you're going to readdress all of this on Thursday, you know, as far as the discussion goes with the extension board?
I guess from my point of view, for Sonya's benefit, it probably wouldn't be necessary for you to stay today.
Okay.
But we'll be, because everybody's going to be gathering around the table on Thursday anyway, so.
Correct. Okay.
I guess, I guess I have one question. I think, you know, probably your, your calendar here is probably in response to our communication thing that was talked about, you communicated with us and back and forth, and I think this is nice for us, maybe to have some idea of activities and so on, but I guess to me, I mean, it's, it's, if there's something here, for example, in the area, one of these particular days that there's more information, I guess, I'll just, you know, I'll take an example, but if there's something, in one particular day, that you did something that that, that this board should, should be aware of or know about, maybe highlight that as being part of a, of update? Does that make sense? What I'm kind of looking at, I mean, I really don't know if I care day to day to day what, what you do, even though it's nice to see this, but, but if there's, but, I mean, because it's repetitious sometimes to you.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, so, this is nice. I mean, if you want to continue, I mean, I like to see this, but, but maybe expand if there's something that, a meeting that results into something, and with a robotic meeting, January 14th, well, yes, you had a meeting, but is there something coming forward that, that we should know about and add it? If there isn't, fine. If there is, but just what I'm thinking is, is you tend some of these, that you think is something that, that we should be aware of, then let us know.
Okay.
About any activity. If it isn't, then it's just that you attended it.
This, this is great background material. If we have a question above and beyond what your other report is, you can pull this up, and it's all there, so.
The non-traditional numbers that were part of that report that the SDSU extension brought to the summit, a lot of those numbers come from those in-school enrichment things, such as the Take a Stand program and the 4-H after school, where those youth are not otherwise enrolled in a 4-H program.
Sure.
One of, one of the questions that I was asked was, when you're counting the out of the non-traditional students, like here, you had Tuesday, February 11th, the Take a Stand for the Sioux Valley 4th grade, and then again on the 12th, the Sioux Valley 4th grade, are those 4th graders each counted then twice, since it was two different events?
It's two different classes, but they're only counted once.
So like, if one student does three different out-of-school events, they're counted one time?
And if they're already enrolled in 4-H, they're not counted in the number of youth that participated in Take a Stand?
That question comes up a lot, so I think that's good to get that.
Youth are counted one time. When we report for civil rights compliance, I can count them as many times as I want, but that's for civil rights reasons, and that shows that you're, the number of people you're reaching on a regular basis. But when they come to the reports that are sent for the ES 237, which is the federal report that South Dakota Extension submits, those youth are counted one time. And the program that we use helps us to eliminate any duplicate numbers, so that we are correctly counting.
Stephanie, would it be okay if Sonya stepped down and picked up her copy of? We have, we have a full copy of the Cheeseman report for you, and it's downstairs. Michelle can get it for you.
Okay.
If you want to stop and pick.
Actually. Michelle's not there. She's in the control room today, so Katie can help you if you should. There, there's two of them that look just like that sitting on my desk. One has a desk and one doesn't. Take the one that doesn't have the desk.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Sonya. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments that popped into mind from any of the department heads? If not, we'll move on to Stacy and our final. If not, we'll move on to Stacy and our finance office report. We've got our annual report.
The annual, there we go, there we go. The annual report was presented in your packet, it is finished for two thousand thirteen, it's always a big project to get done and it's nice when it's complete. The reporting piece of it or the publication part of it this year changed a little bit, they created a new form that we needed to use to publish the annual report. It will be published here in the next couple of weeks, it has to be published by the end of March, and so we don't have time to put it in the minutes, approve the minutes next week, and get it published by the end of March, so I'll have to publish it as its own thing, separate publication here in the next week or so. So that forms a little bit different, and I put in just some of the, the major exhibits this time, usually we published exhibits one and two. I provided, I think, one and two and three and four, I think, for you just to, to look over, but otherwise, nothing out of the ordinary really, if you have any questions, go ahead and let me know.
Any questions? Tom, I see you're looking seriously at the paper.
Which I had seen before, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, the, the information that's in this document is derived from going through the, the end-of-year report that, that, I think we're looking at this and we're kinda reading at this at the same time of, of...
Those are two totally separate documents.
They are, they're separate documents, but I think that's what people are focusing on more than...
Yeah, you don't need to look at, the handout that's on your desk is part of my report for later on in the meeting, Stacy's annual report is completely different.
But the numbers are derived from this, taken from some of these.
A very small portion.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to look at what Stephanie did.
The year-end budgets.
Okay, yes, just...
She took every, every department's budget and showed where they ended up at the end of the year.
Okay, some of those numbers will be the same, but what I do with the annual report delves into it even further, we're more, our bottom line is we're looking at, we need all of our fund balances to balance from exhibit to exhibit, and then you change it from fund balance to net position, I mean, there's, it's a little bit, a little bit more in-depth probably than what Stephanie is presenting. There, it's, some of the numbers will probably, you would probably be able to find them from my report to her report, but not everything.
Basically, look at Stacy says that's the financial position of the county as we ended as of December thirty-first. What you looked at on your desk or what this report was, you guys asked to see what the budgets ended the year, so this is just a budgetary document, doesn't have anything to do with cash balances, fund balances or anything, it's just what your adopted budget was versus what people spent. Stacy's looks at the financial condition of the county.
Mine, my report is what the auditors will come in, probably over, you know, the summer when they get here, and that's what my documents that I presented are the ones that they will audit as the year-ending thirteen for the county.
And there isn't anything that drastically changed for you in that? This report from other years, it looks...
Nope. I mean, you constantly, things constantly change with the annual report, they're constantly making, the gaspy folks are constantly making revisions, but overall, no, nothing has...
Nothing you need to bring to our attention, thank you.
No.
Good question. Any other questions on the report? Number eight, we move on to our scheduled agenda items. We're a little ahead of schedule for a ten a.m., if it's all right with the board, we'll move on to regular business until such time, is that okay? Okay. Under regular business, item A is action on abatement fourteen zero zero one, this is the application by Peace Evangelical Lutheran Church, and the parcel is listed in the amount of seventeen one fifty-four eighty-eight. Chair would entertain a motion. So moved by Commissioner Weiseth?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Krogman. Discussion?
Being the first time around on one of these, I do have one. In the future, that, because they're becoming church, they don't have taxes, but the old, the taxes that are due are from last year when they weren't a church, so what are we forgiving here?
This, Commissioner Weiseth, this is the prorated amount, that it was owned by a financial company for X amount, I think the purchase date was, the church purchased it August fourteenth, so the taxes will be paid up to August fourteenth, and then the church's months that they owned it for thirteen, this is the amount.
Time flies.
Time flies, and it was a large valued property, and so the taxes are very large. So this is the amount that the church is asking you to abate for from August fourteenth to December thirty-first.
Okay, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Weiseth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we go on to item number B, which is our action to approve agreement fourteen dash twenty-eight, and this is between Brookings County and Daniels Residential Incorporated. Chair would entertain a motion for discussion. Moved by Commissioner Falcon.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Weiseth. Discussion.
Krogman.
Krogman? Okay, sounded just like Tom. Discussion.
Is, Dick, I guess this is part of the storage building, Labor Department Storage Building, is there anything in this lengthy document from Banner that, but I mean, I tried to scan it, but I guess it's been reviewed and, and everything is in order, and this is the final document prior to the...
Right, this was just a formal agreement through Banner that they use in all their contractual things, so.
So they, yeah, they, so they've approved every step of the, of the process and I guess, I guess, I mean, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, it, it looks like just a standard construction form that makes sure everything's complied with in the, is part of the, of the, you know, award that when we awarded the, the funds to do this project.
Yes, I did have a chance to review it, and as long as Dick has no substantive concerns, I have no legal concerns with this, with us signing this.
Okay, good question. Any, any other questions, comments, commissioners? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Weiseth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now it's time for the sprayer man. Gary Eggerberg, our weed and pest control officer, would you come forward? It's time to approve the annual weed bids, and so while Gary's coming forward, the chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falcon. Okay, Gary? Good morning.
Good morning. And we got two bids this year, one from AgFirst and one from Ramsdale's. The AgFirst bid was twelve forty per gallon for two four D amine, and Ramsdale's was fifteen fifty per gallon for, for the two four D amine. And I might add that AgFirst was a dollar thirty cheaper this year than they were last year, so, and that, we took that bid last year, that was the only bid we had, so, I would, I guess it's not my choice, but I think AgFirst bid here looks pretty, pretty reasonable to me when you're multiplying a doll, this dollar thirty times four thousand gallons or the difference here, what, three, three tan times four thousand gallons, I, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Obviously, that's your recommendation.
That's, that is my recommendation.
Okay, any other questions? Gary? Tom?
Have you ever thought using other chemicals? I mean, do you just general, what's the theory, just spray a ton of it out there or do you rather spot spray with Milestone or something, what's more expensive, really?
Milestone is...
You have to go back mirrors off and get some good life out of it, and, you know, I'm just wondering, have you ever looked at all these other chemicals and sometimes, pennywise, pound foolish, that's, I guess.
Excuse me.
And on my farm, I have weeds, the Yazoo, and I'm always going after...
Well, with Milestone, it's expensive, and there's a, the label says that if you, wherever you spray it, it cannot be hayed for three hundred and sixty-five days, and I don't wanna get into that because with this two four D amine, we've got a, a seven-day waiting period, and we used to have thirty days, and that used to create some problems when the farmers were trying to hay the, the ditches, so with the seven day, that's not a problem. I'd like to use Toradon sometimes, but my predecessor was told that if there was any Toradon found in the water test wells, they were gonna be coming to us first with that, and I, I don't think we wanna, I don't think we need to jeopardize Brookings County by using Toradon, so we've never bought any Toradon, no Toradon's been used since, since my predecessor was here or myself.
I was just looking at pennywise, pound foolish, sometimes, you know, Grayson, Kurtail, they all cost a little more, but sometimes you don't have to go back as soon, you don't have to do as much, you know, with just a couple of spots, you can just zing them and, you know, sometimes if you get it all done after a five-year period, it was cheaper to do the more expensive stuff.
There, there isn't any chemical that's gonna eradicate any of the, the weeds and, and the, and the truth of the matter is, by using two four D amine, I don't have to worry about my phone ringing with, or with people complaining about drift like I do with these other chemicals, so that's one reason for it, and, and the two four D amine does, it does a nice job. I don't, I'm not gonna say it does an excellent job, but it does do the job that we're looking for, and that's to control these weeds from going on and making seeds, the, during the, you know, during the growing period, and the problems of it is with the Canadian thistles, they're, they're coming the whole season, and so when we start, like when, let's say when we do a township, by the time we have finished all of the townships we have to do, it's, it's probably too early when we first started, probably too late when we finished, and so we, we just try to get a happy median in there.
Is this, is this the chemical that other counties, pretty much all the counties use, or does some of them use...
Some use Toradon, a lot of them use two four D, some use Milestone, but with, again, with a three hundred and sixty-five day waiting period, until they change that, if they change that, I will use some Milestone for some spot spraying. It's too expensive to use it solid like we do for two four D.
And, and I suppose the issue too with the drift and stuff, you wouldn't be able to spray, if you use that, you wouldn't be able to spray as many days as you're able to spray now because of the drift that could cause more damage, you know, in the winds, correct?
Well, with, you've just gotta follow the label, if it's ten miles an hour or fifteen miles an hour, this two four D amine has got a, a fifteen mile an hour max limit on it and, which it used to be ten, and I personally, when the winds get to ten and are starting to creep up to twelve, thirteen, we're pretty well thinking about shutting her down, coming on in, and so...
I think what you're doing, Gary, is the very best you can with the thought of liability in mind, you know, so...
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't want the problems and I don't want it for the county, being I'm, when I'm doing this for the county, it's, I've got, I've got all of you to answer too if, if we get, if we have a problem out there, and, and of course, you know, back, I mean, I've been at this for a long time, and, and you've always got this alleged damage, and we've got one place that we won't even drive a truck by, we, we go around, stay away from it, so it's, and of course, when I used to do it with an airplane, it used to really be fun, so, it's hard to hide the airplane.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This, this has nothing to do with the bids, but I, I would like to bring this up while you're here after we vote on this.
So, sit tight.
So I do have some more, stay there.
Okay, any, any, any other discussion regarding the bids? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Weiseth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Miller?
Okay, I, I was gonna do this in my report, but being Gary's here, I'd like to talk about this in our open meeting with his presence. I received a call from a constituent concerned about the fact that we were no longer spraying for mosquitoes, and she had called Gary Halt, who is the chair of the weed board, and, and myself, and both of us explained to her that the EPA regulations are such that if one person complained, and Gary can attest to the fact that we do get complaints, we could subject the county to a liability of a ten thousand dollar a day fine, and we were not willing to do that, and her question then was, well, why can the city do it? We're getting West Nile out here, and, and three people out there in the last three years have had West Nile, and, you know, I don't know why the city can do it, but her next question was, well, can the county sub to the city to come out here and spray? And, you know, I, I didn't have an answer for that question, but I, I just wanted to bring that up while Gary was here in case any of you had any questions for him regarding spraying for mosquitoes. Now, I, we wrote to the, our congressional delegation concerning this in two thousand eleven, I received letters back and they were all gonna wait and see what happened with the EPA, well, it, nothing, it's, the, the rules are there and we're not spraying, so, you know, if anybody has any questions for Gary along those lines, they might want to...
I'm also personally liable at ten thousand dollars per day, and of course, that, that's due to that NPDES law that was passed, or went into effect October thirty-first of two thousand eleven, and I think, I think probably everybody's pretty well aware of what we're up against, or I was hoping that HR bill, HR nine thirty-five would kinda follow along with this farm bill, but so far it hasn't, so, we're, with our other spraying, we're, we're keeping track, I, I don't have, I mean, I don't have to have people checking the species of the, of the, the weeds and, and counting the numbers before we go and spray like you, you're supposed to do with mosquitoes. It used to be where we just, I'd call Jim Wilson at the college and say, well, what do you think, is it, should we start spraying or, or what? And, and they had the traps and they were doing, they had the texts to check the, the species of mosquitoes, and when the, the Culix tarsalis, which are the ones that caused the, the West Nile problem, when they'd get to whatever number it was they were looking for, they'd, he'd say, ah, maybe you better start spraying, and the way Alan would go, so, in those days, but, and it's not, it's not like that anymore, we're, we're supposed to have traps out, and I'm supposed to determine when to start spraying, what chemical to use, before we spray, I, I need to look and see what, you know, how bad it is, then after we spray, I have to go out and evaluate it, it's, until they get rid of that, if they get rid, and, so we can go back like we did before, I guess we could start spraying again, but until they do that, I, with this ten thousand dollar fine hanging over both of our heads, I'm not gonna personally get involved with it.
I guess the question I have is that, Kenny, citizen, you can bifoggers... I guess the question I have is that Kenny, citizen, you can buy foggers. And you can buy a chemical to spray in your own yard and so on. I mean, you can, if a person really wanted to. And I think that, yes, we were out spraying and we were spraying highly populated areas, whether around the lakes or places that were higher population, but we weren't spraying the whole county anyway. I mean, we were just hitting populated places and if a person really feels they want to do something, they still would have an opportunity to fog themselves, their yards or whatever it would be. I mean, I, I think it gives a little bit of a false sense of security just, just because your road has been sprayed that you're not going to go out and go somewhere and get bit by a mosquito that's going to give you the disease. I mean, so I think it's, it helps, but I don't think it's just because we spray or don't spray is going to give anybody that, that you're never going to get West Nile because of where you may go and things like that. And I, I, if we could do it, but I don't think it's worth the risk of the dangers of what it could cost us. And people have options of fogging your yards or whatever too, or their acreages if they want to.
Can they, can they buy the chemical? Can anybody spray? I mean, you have to be licensed, don't you?
They can buy these, they, they can't buy the spray that we're using, but they can buy these, what is it, CO2? Things that they can use. Propane, yeah, it's.
They just get out of mist and they, yeah, those work.
Yeah, they're, they can, they can use their own personal, I mean, they can do whatever they want to do in their, in their yard with, I mean, within reason. They can't do anything they want to do, but, but I understand that those propane foggers or whatever they are, I guess they work pretty well. I mean, I've heard they do. I don't, it looks to me like that's a good way to draw them all into your yard. I never have really quite figured that out. But I know when we're sitting out at night, I, we've got some candles lit around there that we use and hope for the best. It's, needless to say, West Nile is endemic and it's, it's something I never dreamt we were going to have to worry about. But mosquitoes don't only have West Nile, they have other diseases that are pretty serious to, to humans also. And so I guess, I guess we're just hung with it.
Gary, you're.
I don't know if this, personally, I don't know if this fogging and misting, I, I agree with you. I, I, I don't, if you really want to know my feelings about it, I don't think it does that much good. It, it does some good, but I don't think it's the answer. If you really want to get them, you just about got to call in the airplanes and that is the cost prohibitive that. But if, if you were going to do, do it with the, with the airplanes, I think you could really do a job. These misters running around here and there and all over, they're getting a few, no doubt about it.
The, I, I sympathize with what you're working against and later in our agenda, I think it's noted that on the twenty-fifth, that'll be something for the National Association of Counties. But actually, I'm appointed to a local government advisory board for the EPA. And that's where we're going, is to DC to the EPA. And, and there's another commissioner from Idaho and I, we're all from rural areas. We're actually going to gather data on precision, precision agriculture and bring it and show officials in the EPA offices, in the headquarters, what is going on out here because they don't understand how precise our ag economy and our farmers and ranchers are in the use of chemicals and fertilizers to protect the environment and their economic investment. At the same time, everything is taken out of context. And the original intent of the EPA was to do things within reason to protect the environment, just like the Clean Water Act. But everything is out, now out of context and the control is in with the bureaucrats and not the Congress. And that's what we got to do is we got to get the control back into Congress because we've got now bureaucrats reading the law and saying, well, the law is our guidance and that's why we're making this regulation or this requirement. And it's not done at the congressional level, it's done in the administrative staff's office. So we as a public need to take that, that control back and get it in the Congress and look at what's the real intent. And the intent wasn't to shut down the efforts of weed control and so forth. It was common sense use of the product, but it's gone beyond that. So I sympathize with what you're doing.
Stephanie brought up a citizen's question, I guess I would have the same question. The city does it, why can't the county do it, other than the liability? But I mean, what are they using, what's their liability?
Same as ours.
So they're just rolling the dice then, or what?
Apparently.
I wonder if we could approach the city and just ask what their thinking is so that we'd have a.
You did talk to them, didn't you, and ask them if they were aware?
Yeah, they didn't, I gotta be careful what I say here. They weren't, weren't aware of the, the permit at, at the time that we, this was a few years back. The permit was out, but I, I don't think I want to touch that. That's, I'm, I'm going to be stepping on other, somebody else's toes and they, you know, he, they can, he can handle it any way he wants to. I, I know what the permit says and I know what the last page says and, and for you and for me. And this is the way I'm handling it, with your permission, of course.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Gary, appreciate you being here.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to bring up? Okay?
No, not, not at this point. No, we, I think we've probably covered it pretty well this morning.
Well, at least you got spray.
I'm glad that you brought that up so we could discuss this because this has been, I've been carrying this for quite a while and it's.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yep, thanks again.
I just don't want to get anybody in trouble.
We appreciate that. Okay, moving on, Commissioner Assistance Report.
I don't think I'll be done in a minute.
Do you want to start that before we do our ten o'clock thing?
Okay. I'm, I'm actually going to go through my report this week because I did miss some stuff last week by not going through it. There's a couple of things that I wanted to point out. First of all, in your packet, or on your desk this morning, I had a copy of the year-end budget. There, there was a request, I don't know, a couple of weeks or about a month ago from Dennis wanting to see how the budgets actually ended. If you go through this document, I made a couple of points on, first of all, we did make some changes to the personnel services line after the budget was adopted, so that's where you're going to see all the salary line slightly off. And then you're also going to see in all budgets, the utility line off because we switched the way we were doing cellular allowances from being a taxable pay into a reimbursement through the regular claim cycle. And then the other thing to point out is when, when the auditors come in and they look at these departmental budgets, if you just pull up the first one, for an example, that very first page, which is the commissioner's budget, they don't go line by line and want to know if each of those lines are balanced. What they want to know is the bottom line, at the total on the bottom, if that was in the negative or not. So when we say for auditing purposes, this budget's okay, but for budgeting purposes, the commission goes through and approves a line-by-line budget. So it is good for you to go through and look at what budgets and which departments are going over on a line-by-line basis. I did make notes on each of the budgets that received any kind of contingency transfer because that would have increased their budget. And I just want you to know that if we had not done that, then you can see like, for example, in the commissioner's budget, we did a one thou, oh, you can't read that very well, sorry, a hundred and three thousand, three thirty-four. And that was for the township projects that we knew about. But had that not been done, you would have been in the hole eighty thousand dollars. So some other, I did just make other comments on there if there was something that we knew about. A couple of items that come up in discussion during budget every year that I want the board to be aware of is, Vicki and I did up the judicial budget for two thousand and fourteen, however, we did not update, or up it enough to increase, would have, that would have covered this eighty thousand dollars of additional money needed in contingency transfers last year. So I think we're going to have to look at an additional increase for two thousand and fifteen. Our utility rates in county buildings were higher than what we anticipated and it did not get bumped up for next year either. So that should, will probably be another one that we see coming. We did a twenty-seven thousand dollar contingency for human services, basically for inpatient, and I think rent was the other one. But if you look, we had actually nineteen thousand left over, so we really probably were only off by about eight thousand. And you guys always have a lot of discussion on whether we're putting enough into that. And I think if you consider that that budget is stuff that's largely, you can't anticipate what you're going to spend, being within eight thousand dollars, I think is a pretty good, that's a good place to be because we did increase our contingency to allow for those things that come up. It turned out we did not need the additional money in the behavioral health budget, but we did put it in there just in case because we were having a lot of those involuntary commitments at the end of the year last year. And there's also a lot of discussion each year during the budget on the weed department. I'm going to turn down this mic, it's kind of echoing, on the weed department about whether there's enough in there. You guys have cut that out in the past, but again, this year we have another budget balance of fifty-four thousand, five fifty-eight in the operational, which is basically the chemical supplies during the budget. This year, you guys discussed cutting that back some because that's a significant amount of surplus in one departmental budget. That's why you have contingency, so I just pointed that one out. And then the highway fund had a significant surplus as well, nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So that will, you know, we anticipated probably be, being close to two point five million dollars in the fund balance at the end of the year. Well, that brought us up closer to three point three million. So you have a significant amount of, you know, a large fund balance in the highway fund as well. And that's separate and distinct from anything that you have designated in the general fund reserves. So you have everything that you guys did for designations in the general fund plus another three point three million dollars in the highway fund. Approximately three hundred thousand of that money in the highway fund is reserved for snow removal, but the rest is highway purposes and it cannot be used for anything else. So just keeping that in your minds that you have, you know, a while back, we were up at that three million dollar mark in that fund and the board at the time thought that that was too high and started reducing the transfer in order to spend that down a little bit because money in the general fund can be used for any purposes where the highway fund can't. But I'm just pointing that out because we did increase our transfer to highway significantly this year as well as last year compared, in comparing to previous years. So you guys go through this in more detail and if you have questions, we can go through it again at the next meeting. But it is just a departmental budgets for the, for, I guess, each department. And like I said earlier, it is separate from what Stacy does. Stacy looks at the total financial position of the county, but this is a good budgeting document and something that you guys should review before we get into the budgeting cycle for two thousand and fifteen.
Just a quick question now, the contingencies have already been added to these budget lines.
Right.
It doesn't show, there's a, there's a negative.
Right.
I guess the only other question I would have is how close did this come to our projected anticipated carryover as a total? Because, I mean, at the end of the year, the general fund, at the end of the year, the general fund has a, and that's probably in that first report you just showed us, Stacy, right? The general fund has a, has a balance in it that's carried over. And that whole amount should coincide with the amount that you anticipated the carryover.
Well, we don't ever anticipating carrying over anything. The way that budgeting is done on a county level is that you anticipate you're spending a hundred percent. But with that in mind, when Stacy and I went through these end-of-the-year budgets before we had that contingency or when we were trying to designate cash, we were estimating based on what people had had in previous claim cycles. And I would say that we were close to where we thought because nothing significant jumped out here from what Stacy and I were anticipating.
Because, because, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with this, this is June, July, your year's half over with and you, you'd kind of say, well, I think I'm going to spend this much money to the end of the year and all of a sudden things happen where you spent a lot less or things where you spent a lot more. And sometimes that number sways, but you were fairly close with what you anticipated to what actually happened.
Yep, and the move that we tried to get to, geez, I, I've been here too long now, so my, my years are starting to run together about four or five years ago, I would say, was that we cut, it's probably closer to seven years ago now, we cut significantly out of departmental budgets because we were finding fifty thousand dollar surpluses in each budget every year. And what that does is then at the end of the year, all of a sudden, you have all this rev, all these funds that weren't spent. And so we cut significantly, the board cut significantly each departmental budget, wanting that the end of the year should be that there should be very little money left in that budget because we're only budgeting what, what actual needs are and not contingency items for each department. And instead, we started budgeting a large contingency. Now, if we keep that philosophy that you're really only budgeting for what you actually need on an annual basis and our contingency is for those items that come up, then theoretically, what you would be carrying forward on an annual basis would be whatever's in that contingency if it goes unspent. But that's why it's important to look at this department by department budget because if you want to continue with that mindset that we've done in the past and you need to look at these budgets that have fifty thousand dollars left over and say, maybe we need to look at cutting those back because that would be something that we didn't anticipate being sitting in that budget at the end of the year.
I could give you a report too of what was rolled into fund balance at the end of the year too. Basically, what each fund had left over and was rolled into their fund balance. Whatever budget was left gets rolled into fund balance at the end of the year. So I could, I could, I have those numbers, I can create that report for you too.
Looking at that end of year to see, you know, how this all came together. I think you're right, I mean, we don't want to take departments and say, look, we're going to, we're going to, you know, put your budget so lean that you're going to have to be, you're, you're, you know, you don't have a chance of not going over. And if you go over, it looks like you overspent. Well, that's not the intent. The intent is unforeseen expenses, comes out of contingency. It's just budgeting, not putting more money in there just for that thing that may happen.
Right, and the nice thing about that is that we have an ongoing contingency item list, you know, that I started at the beginning of the year. As a department comes in and says, like the sirens, we know we're going to have to replace this, it's going to be thirty thousand dollars. I add that to that list, so we kind of have a running total of how much of that contingency we're going to need. And theoretically, if departments are budgeting for only what their actual needs are, then all you'll have for carryover is what's remaining out of that contingency that we haven't already spoken for.
I think, I think since we started doing it that way, it's, it's really, it's been much better. When we took, like, I think we go with the three-year average of actual, actual cost of running that department. And then if there's a capital need that's, that's necessary, we set it off to the side to show that it went up or down this year because we did or did not have to have a, a capital expenditure. But then for the benefit of our citizens, you look at, look at our budget and it's pretty accurate. It shows exactly what it costs to run that department versus having contingency built into each individual department. And so it's not skewing the numbers, you're getting the actual operating cost of that department. And the other thing that, that for the benefit of the public is the fact that that's all possible because we've got a kind of a, a team effort between our board and all of our department heads. And everybody understands that and it, it works wonderful. But without that team approach, you know, and then it's, things get skewed again. But I'm, I'm really proud of what we've got because you look at our, our actual operating budget, it tells, tells yourself and the citizens, this is what it costs to operate this particular department of government. We don't have a lot of citizens here, do you want to continue on with yours a little bit? Or do, do you want to stop and go with the intended?
Well, there's a couple of items in there that are going to require discussion amongst the board, like the letter from the concerned citizens. So I wonder if you would want to do that after?
Okay, if you want to, if you want to put your report on hold and. Hello?
Hopefully they're still.
Real, real briefly, Bev, you weren't here earlier, do you have anything from register deeds? I just want to acknowledge that you're attending the meeting and we give you an opportunity. Okay. Well, welcome and keep up the good work.
Cheeseman Center, this is Rebecca.
Hi, is Rob available?
Sure, can I tell him who's calling?
This is Stephanie from Brookings County.
Oh, sure, hold please.
Okay, for our public, we are now on item number eight in our scheduled agenda items. And this is presentation discussion of the four-H summit final report and we do have a report in front of us.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to let you know that all five of us commissioners are in attendance here today along with, with our staff, department heads, and we've got two handsome gentlemen representing our local media in attendance as well.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Rob Kim with the Cheeseman Center for Democracy and with me is Wes Brown.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, gentlemen, what I'll do is I'll, this is your report to us and so we'll kind of let you take the lead and, and kind of lead us through this. let you take the lead and, and kind of lead us through this rather thick document. I realize a lot of it you're probably going to have summarized. And we're not being rude, but if at any point a light bulb comes on and in the mind of any of our commissioners, and they've got a, a question or a clarification, we will interrupt you and ask that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will begin with just a brief summary of, of the, of what we did, how we did it, and then look at recommendations, and at any time, like you said, during that process, we would be more than happy to answer any questions. If that format will work for you, Mr. Chairman, we will proceed.
That, that works for us, and also, gentlemen, as you're going along, we've got our packets in front of us. Would you refer to a particular page number so that we can follow along?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As I said earlier, my name is Rob Timm, I'm with the Cheeseman Center for Democracy. It, it was a pleasure working with you all and, and Stephanie Eligne in, in this process. Briefly, we will, we'll talk briefly to begin with, with our survey. We felt that the beginning of this process, that we, we needed to survey those that were interested in the 4H program. As, as indicated in your, in your, in your report, one hundred and fifty-one surveys were returned, and that was a really good mix of respondents from both the farm, the rural area, the city, and what have you. What, what was even more interesting is most of those that responded had experience with 4H. So as we go, proceed through this, this quick summary, please keep in mind that the answers to these questions in our survey and in the summit are, in my opinion, our opinion, truly introspective when you think about who responded. And those who responded had a lot of experience or some experience with 4H, so if you, if you'll keep that in mind. Now, one of the ele, first element we talked about was funding, and although public funding is a preferred method of supporting the 4H program, a lot of our survey respondents seemed to also be willing to look at opportunities for sponsorships and to fundraise to help support the program as well. So we thought that was a very good finding that we saw in the funding aspect. When we looked at branding image and, you know, and marketing, most thought the program had a great positive image. However, an opportunity we, we've believed exists, when, when you look at, only sixty-one percent of those respondents said that the program, that the program lets others know about what services and activities are, are available via 4H. So there's an opportunity there to look at what can be done to grow the program, to let others know and to communicate that with the public. So, so there's a great opportunity there. I know when we talked, you know, in the summit, which I'll briefly, which we'll talk about more, you know, in, in depth here in a minute, the, the iGrow website was, was an issue that a lot of people mentioned as well. That was, that was a, an issue and a problem, so we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. We looked at purpose and mission. Most, most folks understood the mission of 4H, and, and three-quarters said that the program is, is, is effective in fulfilling that mission as they saw it. And so, so the mission and purpose were, were understandable, yet, as I said before, maybe some folks in the community don't really understand exactly the, the particular programs or the activities that are going on. When it came to looking at the needs of the youth throughout the county, the survey respondents felt that more youth need to be involved in the 4H programs. Yet, again, the same issue is regarding letting, letting youth and parents know about which programs exist and how to get involved in that was another, you know, opportunity or challenge that, that was brought forth. Some of the strengths and opportunities, other opportunities, 4H leadership and volunteer development were, were some strengths that most people thought were, were prevalent. Yet again, opportunities exist to enhance communication and financial support. Now, when it came to, to the summit, what we found was interesting is that we, we received off of the survey sixty-eight RSVPs saying, those folks said they were going to show up for the summit. Yet, one hundred and twenty-eight people showed up that evening, which was, which was great. I'll turn it over to Wes for a second to talk about what we did with regard to those one hundred and twenty-eight folks that showed up that evening.
So once again, as I ta, talked to you in a previous phone conversation, the most important thing as far as a roundtable is participation. And so I think having a hundred and twenty-eight people shows that there's a, there's an interest in the program, and, and I think that, I think the roundtable in that essence works because everybody can have a voice at the table. We, we passed out numbers and identified tables and had people, as they came in, we gave them a table number. And the reason we did that is to really disperse the people so they don't sit in the same group, and, and so that way, each table has a wide variety of discussion, and it's not just really focused on one area. And, and some people, there was a handful of people that really wanted to sit with certain people, so we kind of changed, you know, we allowed a little bit of that, but for the most part, everybody fell in, in line with that, that whole idea. Anything else you want me to talk about that at this point, or? So that was how we basically set it up, and then I, I thought, I really have the feeling that, that it worked. Everybody had a, a voice, nobody was really stifled. We, as you, you know, I was able to run around the room and let, let everybody talk. And, and that's really the key about a roundtable is, is open discussion and not a debate, you know, it's just a deliberative discussion.
And, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, one of the, a, as you saw in the report, one of the overriding and, and kind of consuming centralized themes throughout, you know, not only the survey but the summit particularly, was communication between and among all parties. It, it appears that there's been a systemic breakdown in communication, you know, throughout, you know, or, or among many of those parties and institutions and what have you. Again, you know, there's confusion or lack of information about 4H, which particularly for, from how it's funded, how it operates, to the overwhelming, you know, question of, you know, facilities. Most agree that 4H has a great number of relevant activities for youth, yet communication with the public and even from, you know, even within 4H about these activities was not consistent. And so, as you see on page eighteen of your report, you know, those, what we did was we summarized the survey and summit participants' recommendations, and then we brought forth some of our own recommendations as, in, in relation to both, you know, the survey and the summit, summit themselves, or summit those, summit as well. I, I think, you know, it, it, it appears based on some, you know, some research that we've, we've done in, in the interim between the summit and, and today, it sounds like you're already looking at it, you know, some of these recommendations, you, you've come to those conclusions already. So, so, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, you know, I would be, we would more, be more than happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any commissioners have any questions they'd like to bring up at this time? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, so proceed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, some of the recommendations we have within the report are, are pretty straightforward, in our opinion, particularly looking at ways to enhance communication and look at the issue of communication, but also looking at clarifying, you know, intent, looking at ways to enhance participation within the 4H program, program itself, and then looking at future planning for not only programming but facilities as well. You know, there's, there's, I think there's a myriad, we believe there's a myriad of opportunities here to grow the 4H program, and a myriad of opportunities to, to overcome some of these, some of these obstacles. You know, some of the questions that we, we raised were particularly in regard to the requirements such as, is there a need for, for both a 4H promotion expansion committee and an extension advisory board? Another question that we posed, you know, was in regard to considering, get, you know, presenting a, a, a program-specific agenda item on, on your, your agenda, maybe every other month from 4H, to provide some accountability as well as to give you updates on what's going on in the program. But as I said, specifically showing on the agenda it's 4H. Then, then, then a, a truly, you know, a, a, a town hall discussion or, or a more specific discussion with those 4H leaders as to what, what the future holds with regard to facilities. And I know you all have, have heard, you know, from your constituents regarding facilities and what, what the overall, you know, concern or anxiety is in regard to facilities. And so I think overall, if I could summarize, you know, the entire report and also the, the summit and what have you, I think it was a great opportunity to get everybody at the table for that evening. We had several comments from, from individuals that stated, this was, this was great. I'm, I'm so glad that everybody was able to come to the table and at least get people there. You know, some people even said that was even a, a major accomplishment, getting, getting the several, several, those hundred and twenty-eight people to the table. So if anything, Mr. Chairman, that, that, that probably was a, an accomplishment in and of itself that you all should be proud of. Where you go from here, Mr. Chairman, is kind of up to you and, and your fellow commissioner members. I think it, it appears, what we've seen is you're already starting the process to, to look at some of the, some of these recommendations and, and to, to truly analyze, you know, how the 4H program fits into what your county government does. And, and that's, that's kind of a more of a philosophical thing than anything that maybe needs to be addressed internally as well. So again, Mr. Chairman, we, we certainly appreciated the time and, and the opportunity to meet you all and to work with Stephanie, and again, we would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from board members? Tom, this is Commissioner Wyeth.
Yeah, Commissioner Wyeth here. Well, I appreciate your document and, and working with us. Of course, looking selfishly, I was hoping to gain more organizational insight from some various groups that didn't even come to participate and/or sat off the sidelines or weren't even in the place, and have them explain their part in the organization of 4H. I was hoping that they would explain their operational relationship with each other to make it more clear. As a father that had two in 4H clubs, you don't understand what's going on above you at all. And so I, I didn't get that. The only other disappointment I had was that maybe the good crowd was great, but it got uncontrollable. I know, went back to get a cookie at a break, right, the first break, and ran into two people leaving because they were, felt they didn't have a say at the table that they were at. They felt intimidated. And what would have been great, if you thought you could have handled eighty, is we could, in their RSVP, had an email or an address so we could follow up with them. We had no connection with them, and they would know that they were specifically invited, and they had accepted. And if you'd otherwise kept it in the controllable number, I guess I thought it, the tables weren't supervised. We had hoped as commissioners to go to one or two tables, but heck, I couldn't keep up with the three that, four in my neighborhood. So it would have been nice to have their email addresses to give them the follow-up also. We don't have, we've got their names, but we don't have no idea how to get ahold of these people that were there. So those are my disappointments. I guess it's just a step in, in the process, and maybe I was trying to get ahead of myself, get too many answers in one night.
Well, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Um, I, with regard to your first, your, your first element of, of your, your statement, I know there were at least three, three of us that, that took it upon ourselves to invite those individuals to, to, to disperse and become part of the discussion at several tables, and those individuals declined that on three different occasions. And so we were very disappointed at that as well, Mr. Commissioner. So in regard to the other, other elements, I think, I think you have, have a very valid point with regard to the number of individuals, the number of people there. I think, you know, looking at it in hindsight, I think the process, we, we could have looked at that process a little bit differently from an invitation-only type of event, but again, with regard to open meetings and things of that nature, there, there's, there's a little bit of a navigation point in that, in that matter. But I think your points, Mr. Chairman, are very, very relevant.
Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Falcone?
Commissioner Falcone here. I guess going back to looking at on page eighteen, and I, when you, when you first told us page eighteen, we got two page eighteen, so it's a page eighteen in the first part of the book, but...
Yes, sir. I apologize for that.
Anyway, looking at, you know, your recommendations or consideration for Brookings County Commission, I think we are, these are good recommendations. I think these are things that we certainly see that need to be done, and at least now we have something that was, was put together by not just commissioners, you know, this is what the public wants, this is what 4H wants, this is what the participating people felt was important. And I do agree that, that we need to, you know, like some of these, you know, consider 4H program provided Brookings County at least, you know, getting month-based, month-to-month basis and, and getting some of these things, and these are all, have already started since this summit, and I think that it's something to give us, okay, these are our challenges, and we can move forward with some of those. But again, as Commissioner Wyeth said, I think, you know, if we could have controlled the, the tables more of making sure every table had, which we tried to do, every table had a specific interest at that table. The table I sat at, it was, it was certainly one-sided and, and more just strictly 4H programming, not programming 4H involvement people than the overall operation, and so it got a little bit, you know, I mean, everybody felt that it was, we were there to shut 4H down at my table, and I kept saying that wasn't the intent, and we spent most of the time talking about that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
If I may respond, Mr. Commissioner, I, Wes and I were just, we were briefly talking about that, and it, it, it's one of the interesting thoughts that is, when you look at the survey itself, it would be interesting to see what responses you would get from, from a more generalized public, you know, say, from city, the Brookings, or Elkton, or, you know, those, the actual communities, what kind of responses we would have gotten with regard to a, questions of, do you know about 4H? What do you know about 4H? Things of those, that nature. I mean, I think, you know, like I said earlier, this is kind of more of an, that was more of an introspective from 4H, looking inwardly amongst themselves, and, and so, and I think there was some miscommunication. I'm, I'm not sure where it came from, Mr. Commissioner, but that was never, and, and you know as well, you guys, you folks know as well as we do, that was never the intent of the summit whatsoever, but there obviously was maybe either a lack of communication or some confusion that was brought forth regarding the, the, the idea that this is, this is a meeting to shut 4H down, which, which was never, ever the case.
Yeah, I, I think you're correct. For some reason, the, the audience was there thinking that that...
For some reason, the, uh, the audience was there thinking that that was the night they were either gonna have a 4H program in the future or it was probably, uh, um, gonna be, the participation from the county was gonna be deleted from, uh, our budget. And that wasn't the case at all. The, the whole idea was to take a look at the program, uh, from the inside out and then also look into the future and where it was headed, you know, several years from now. And then all of the rest of the topics, i.e. necessary facilities or whatever would be needed to carry out that program as you envision it could be in the future, uh, would be a part of the topic. And unfortunately, we kind of dwelled on the past and, and the present rather than what our focus was, was hoping to look at the future and, and what we can do to help enhance the program as it moves forward. Commissioner Wyeth? Yeah, Commissioner Wyeth, again, the press is here and I do want to clarify and, and maybe there was a misunderstanding by some of the groups that, um, organizations that make up the structure of, uh, where he said didn't participate, is, uh, they were invited to come, but I think mean spread at tables wouldn't accomplish the mission. I was hoping that they would have a few minutes to explain to everybody there how they fit in the whole process rather than, maybe they didn't think sitting at one table, well, we had how many? Ten tables and a few people, three people from the university or you had, say, we would have had a couple from this group and they, they wouldn't be able to got their word out. I think setting some time aside, do you think there was some miscommunication to them that they were just gonna be not being able to make a present, a short presentation or they just thought they were gonna be scattered about or what, what did you think?
Does that question to me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was just, uh, Commissioner Wyeth, I was just thinking, well, I wanted to clarify that, I wanted to defend those people, that they, they got three invites, but what did they think they were being invited to do? And, uh, I was hoping that everybody there would hear how SDSU Extension works in the process, the foundation or whatever, uh, the Extension Board and all the different groups that we work with, with 4H, had a chance to say exactly what they did versus just having a seat at the table. So, one table wouldn't have somebody from Extension, SDSU, wouldn't have a clue what, they didn't gain that knowledge. So, I'm just wondering, maybe some of those groups that defend them a little bit maybe didn't show because they didn't think they had a particular role other than sitting at one table out of ten. And, um, they may have been more enthused knowing that they had five, ten minutes to explain.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, certainly.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, uh, the intent, uh, our understanding from the very beginning, the intent of the summit was, uh, from, for a roundtable discussion amongst, amongst participants and, and the community as opposed to what you're describing as more of a panel discussion or, uh, where those, those entities would actually be, you know, up front and being, you know, and, and obviously, you know, if that were, uh, you know, something that, what, what was necessary or needed, uh, we could have, you know, i- integrated that into that, that evening. And so, you know, again, um, we, we believe that the, the original intent was to discuss 4H, determine, uh, where the issues lie, what, what the strengths, opportunities and, you know, lie and then go from there. Uh, with regard to what, uh, Mr. Chairman, with regard to your comments, uh, I, I think, um, you know, looking at what, what you've, what you've obtained through this is looking at some more rudimentary issues that prob, that need to, in our opinion, need to be addressed first before we look at some of those, the bigger, bigger ticket items or bigger items that, that need to be addressed. Uh, and that's, that's our opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm not, um, you know, I'm not criticizing yet, I, you know, I, some
of the outcome probably isn't what as, as an individual I expected it to be, but the point is, we all need to remember, we're a bellwether. We're the first county in the state that's ever wanted to sit down, that I'm aware of and, and take a, an in-depth look at a program and what its future might be. So, um, obviously, it probably isn't going to be the perfect pie the first time it's tried to be baked. But Commissioner, uh, Miller?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I feel that what Tom was talking about was good and I think that, that that did come out of our, I, I think it's back in our laps as a result of the summit, is that we should have a panel discussion with each of those entities. And I think that, that came out of this summit. I think, I think if we look at this back on what we can do now to improve communication from what came out of this summit, that we can make this better for everybody involved. And, and I really feel that we should do a panel discussion and, and have exactly what you're talking about, uh, come out of that. And I think, I think we can improve communications that way. There, there was, it was obvious in the summit that there was a lot of misinformation out in the public. And I think this would be a good way to straighten out some of that information. So, I think we did get what we, a lot of what we needed out of the summit.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Commissioner, uh, we, we, uh, internally talked a little bit about that as well in terms of, you know, as a result of these, maybe an ad hoc committee or like you're talking about, a table, a panel, um, even a one-page, uh, document or a one-page, uh, description of who, what, when, where, how, why, you know, with regard to 4H would really help clarify. And having that in, out in the public, you know, in, in the, the Brookings register, on your website, those, in, in, in a lot of different formats, uh, I think it would, it would go a long way.
Okay. Comments? Tom, did you have another one?
Well, I just, yeah, I was thinking more of a blend, not a total panel. And I appreciate Commissioner Krogman who was pushing that we're gonna get together and get our feet into this thing as a follow-up. But no, I was thinking, uh, as a panel discussion, but an information moment of fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, from each of the groups that are impacting 4H and then followed with the roundtable. But maybe there wasn't time or whatever, one community, been there, move on, onward and upward and we'll take what we got from you, which is, I appreciate and we'll go from there.
Commissioner Krogman?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think this Thursday, uh, seven o'clock maybe will serve as, as a panel discussion, I think, that we're gonna have. Uh, the body's there and we can ask those questions. I know I wanna ask those questions. I wanna see who's talking to who, who's making the decisions. And I think a lot of those questions can go. And I agree with, uh, Commissioner Miller that, um, I think it'd have been too difficult to get into that type of stuff there at that, at that session. It would have gone too long. I think we needed to keep it to there and I think a lot of this stuff that we're putting in and what you came out of, we got from that. Was it perfect? Probably not. Could have, could have gone sometimes a little better. And I think the amount of people we, we had there limited us from some of the discussion. But I guess from my vision from the beginning of this, um, I don't think we were gonna get all the answers in the summit, but it, what it did is it gave us a guide to, to get those answers. And I think this Thursday will give us a good opportunity to start asking us a little bit more questions and a little more direct conversation in a smaller group, uh, that we can make, ask those questions. And I think, um, as far as I'm concerned, um, you know, the summit was a good start. I think it was well worth it. I think we got communication going. I found out some information I didn't know and I think everybody did. And, and so, um, I think it's a good start. We'll get some good leadership going. Um, and that's what I'd like to see come out of this is a good leadership strategy for 4H moving down and forward.
Okay. For the benefit of you folks at Cheeseman's, this Thursday evening, we have a work session with, uh, the 4H people.
Great.
Commissioner Falcone, do you have any comments? Staff, do you have any questions or clarifications that you'd like to bring forward to these gentlemen? Okay. Uh, do you have any closing comments or anything else that you'd like to bring forward, fellas, before we close?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, uh, we, we would like to just thank you all for your, for your attendance that evening and for your, and moreover, for your participation that evening. Uh, that, that truly, uh, went a long ways to show, um, not only your support of 4H, but your true interest in, in, in the, in the program and also the, the issues at hand. Um, as I stated in our report, um, Stephanie Elwyn has been a, an important cog in this entire process and I wanna, I wanna say you got a, you got a heck of a person there that's, uh, uh, that's a heck of a leader there and, and, uh, we, we certainly appreciate everything she's done to help us out.
Okay. My, after a glowing report like that, Stephanie, did you have a question or a comment?
Um, in scheduling your strategic planning session that we're needing to reschedule for March twenty-fifth, Commissioner Wyeth, he's said he's not available on April twenty-second. I'm wondering with them on the phone if maybe you could look at an alternate date?
I was just thinking, here they are. Should we just try to set the date with? Are you guys the date setters for your, for strategic plan?
Are you, are you the, uh, calendar keepers, gentlemen?
Are you still?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. Uh, Rob is checking his calendar right now.
If the point is to have it on a commission meeting, I'm available the eighth, I'm available the sixth, the twentieth of May, I'm available every June, July, August, but the twenty-second, I'm not available. If that's the point, to have it on the same day as a commission meeting.
Originally, the discussion was to have the session start in the afternoon, you know, you'd have your regular meeting during the morning, do the session in the afternoon and into the evening.
I'm available the eighth of April and I'm, the twenty-second, I just can't do. And then May or whatever, whoever you bar out, you wanna go, but...
April eighth works and, um, and it, and May...
We can't hear you, Wes.
Um, April eighth will work for us and we could go into May.
May sixth.
May sixth works as well.
The election is on April eighth.
Yeah, that's election day.
Yeah, you won't wanna do it that night, obviously.
Yeah.
Stacy's busy, but I, I don't know, is Vicki really tied into the elections that day?
No, there's a, there's a scheduled commission meeting, which obviously I will be here for that, but I don't think you need me for strategic planning, so...
May sixth. I think May sixth might be a better alternative then.
Um, by waiting till May sixth, Rob and Wes, would we be able to do some of the, some additional, like, survey work with our departments that we talked about prior to the date then so we can have some information for reviewing?
Most definitely.
May sixth work for everyone? Okay.
Now...
Ryan? Tom? Steph? Danny Orks? Staff?
I work for you, so I have to be here whenever is it.
Staff, does it work for you? Works for me.
All right.
Gentlemen, if that's all right with you, let's set it for May sixth.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Tom, for bringing that up. Are there any other questions for these gentlemen before we close out their report? Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Look forward to working with you, uh, on the strategic planning and, uh, like I said earlier, um, what this report shows is that this county has always been a strong advocate and supporter of the 4H program. And being a bellwether, like I mentioned earlier, we're the first ones to try and move it forward in a, in a futuristic way. And so, maybe it wasn't a perfect pie, like I said, but at least we baked it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the commission for the opportunity to, to spend some time with you, with you all and, and as well as your supporters. And you're exactly right, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, it, it is a process and, uh, it, by doing so, you do show that this is, this is very important to you and your fellow commissioners. And so, to that, I think your, your constituents and those members of Brookings, you know, population of Brookings County should, should be very appreciative of the fact that, uh, you and your fellow commissioners are, are actually, um, truly looking out for the best interests of not only, uh, you know, 4H folks, but also the entire constituency of Brookings County. So, you should all be very, very, you know, proud of yourselves for, for doing so.
Okay. Well, thank you and we, uh, look forward to, uh, working with you on the strategic planning process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good day.
You too. Goodbye now. Okay, Stephanie, can we go back to you and your report?
Right spot here. Um, yeah, I'll do a, I'll do a new request and delete the old strategic planning session request. Um, just a couple other items in your packet. You had a copy of the eight-county meeting, which we are hosting on Monday. We're gonna be having the dinner set up in this room or the lunch and then we have all the county rooms reserved, uh, for the breakout sessions. We did announce that there would be a tour at eleven fifteen, who anyone who wanted to participate. I have heard back that there are people coming if any board members wanna be here to help host the tour, otherwise I can take 'em around. Um, uh, the only thing we had on the agenda, I'm sure that you guys have all reviewed this already, um, was the legislative review. But if there is any other speakers that the board was wanting me to invite, um, at this point, we have only heard back from one of the legislators, which is Kathy Tyler. We have not heard from the other ones. Hmm? Yeah. I haven't heard from any of the other ones if they plan on attending or not. I would encourage you, if you see them, I'll send them another note, but I would encourage you to also maybe check in with them if you see them at a meeting or anything like that. Um, we did get a copy of the signed MOU back from Extension. I did provide a copy to Sonia as well and that's back in the agreement book. Strategic planning session, we just did that, which, that'll work. Uh, we did, we're very happy with the open house for those that were able to attend. Um, the court system, we're actually keeping tally of the people and they counted eighty people that came through, which with it being a kind of a cold night, we were surprised that there was as many people that came through. We had a lot of positive feedback, um, from the people who came and saw the remodeling project. A lot of them were former employees or elected officials, um, for either the states or the county. Just a reminder that we are having, um, kind of a get-together for Ron today, if you wanna stop by and say goodbye on his last day at two o'clock. Um, a couple other things, we're, we did receive a request from, um, I, I had an inquiry from someone who is interested in looking at having an outdoor concert in Brookings County. He said, "Don't worry, it's not bashing the grass." But, um, and so, I've gotten some information from both, um, Robert Hill and Marty Stanwyck and I'll be forwarding that back to them, but they're not looking for it until two thousand fifteen or sixteen, so it's a ways out. Um, but we did have that inquiry into our office. And then in your, in your packet, you had received a copy of, uh, just to note too, you did get a thank you from Joel for, they were, the court staff was very appreciative of the open house and the remodeling efforts and everything that the county has done to support that. Um, but in your, in your packet, we received a call from Victoria Blankford, I can't say her last name, Blankford, um, and they had attended the DOT open house where they were talking about the planned, um, improvements for the Highway fourteen bypass as well as the roundabout that they're putting on the interstate exit. And he, she said that the majority, the discussion focused on that roundabout, but there is a section of landowners that live on the north side of the Highway fourteen bypass that are concerned about the state not having any turning lanes. And when they brought it up, um, at the meeting, they were basically told no and they've sent a, uh, letters and then haven't received a response. The concern that they have is the city has approved an apartment building. It would be by east and west is off, just east of the Habitat Restore. So, there's gonna be even additional traffic turning and going in and out of that area. And her request, which you saw that in your packet, was, um, that the county commission send a letter to the DOT, that the DOT consider those turning lanes. They are just asking for assistance from the commission 'cause they feel like as citizens are not being heard. So, you guys need to discuss that and let me know and if we need to draft a letter, I can do that for you, but you can do that during your reports or now or... And other than that, though, I don't have anything else to report on. We are doing interviews for the, I should say this, uh, you, you all know, we've received the resignation from Katie Krogman, my deputy. Um, I will be bringing a request to fill vacancy for the next meeting on the twenty-fifth. I had already scheduled interviews for our intern on this Wednesday to fill in for that FMLA leave absence. Um, and so, I am hoping that during the interviews this week, we find a good candidate that's local here that maybe we could start in earlier. Um, if not, we may not be able to be recording the meeting on the next meeting because we will be down to just Jason and I because Michelle already had a planned vacation that week. So, hopefully, we can get an intern to come in and help cover that front office for a little bit, otherwise we may have to go one or two meetings without being televised, so, uh, 'cause we will only have two staff and I will be here. So, um, I'll let you know how that shakes out and I'll let you guys discuss the citizen concern from the homeowner's... concern from the homeowners north of 14th.
That it? Okay, um, any questions for Stephanie? As we move forward, maybe we'll have to seek out somebody to, that has the ability to do the IT thing for us so we can stay televised for our viewing audience.
And I think Bob said that it might be, work for their staff to come and sit at the front so someone can be answering the phones too, so that Jason can still be up here.
We'd be more than happy to assist in any way we can.
Okay, thanks Bob. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
As it concerns the letter, um, I would like to discuss that, I, I see no reason why we couldn't request that the DOT look at that, turning lane there.
Sir?
I, I agree, I think, you know, it's, it's a safety issue and I think it's been brought to our attention and, and I think just have them consider that and look at that, not that we're demanding it, but it's just, I think it's a safety issue and I don't think it would be out of line for us just to write that letter, we feel it could be a safety issue with, especially with expansion of, you know, housing unit, rental units out there, whatever it's going to be that dissipate, because that's pretty dangerous out there.
Well, Commissioner Krogman, are you going to give a minority report or are you going to?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
We, we discussed this also at our economic development, I mean, because she had, she's a part of that board and had requested it and one of the issues there is the speed, you know, it's 55 miles an hour and it's because it's a bypass, you know, and that's it is and it's the intent is to bypass the city and, but when they're going 55 and people, there is no turning lane and people are at a standstill and that's part of the problem is, is there's a good amount of traffic that people take into town and out of town to work and different things too, whether they're heading, you know, back to, uh, you know, the county where they live or the city they live and any of that kind of stuff. And so there's a standstill there and people are coming up going 55 to a stopped vehicle right in the middle of the road with, and it's, and it sounds like, uh, people are going around them on the shoulder, is going around and going 55 around the shoulder, you know, so there's definitely an issue there, um, and I appreciate Victoria bringing it up and bringing it to light and I definitely think we should send something there because it is a safety issue for, for all of the city and the county, because there's a lot of people that use that bypass road, so, um, I definitely think we should, we should discuss it and certainly send something to them to reconsider.
Well, the, um, you know, I travel that road probably more than anyone because I live in that general area and it is, it's a hazard the way it is now. I mean, even if there was no future development, just what is along there, we need the passing lane, I mean, or turning lane, uh, it's just, I, I'm, I'm just waiting, hoping, praying that it doesn't happen, but I know someday there's going to be a major accident out there because a big truck isn't going to be able to get stopped or something, something bad will eventually happen and sooner we get those lanes in. That's a bigger priority to me than the roundabout.
Well, when you mentioned bypass, I never really thought of it that way, I always thought slow people down out there for one thing, but it is a bypass. But unfortunately it's been absorbed into our, it's still on the, physically on the exterior, but you go there from 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning, from 4:30 to 6:30 in the evening, it is a wild place. Four lanes actually would, to finish it from the, that, that bridge overpass and finish it all the way to the interstate would probably be the safest thing, but, because there is a ton of traffic on it.
Yeah.
Quick question too, you know, started planning and different things and one of the excuses, I guess, or the reasons behind not doing it is too expensive. Um, and has there ever been any participation on a state highway that they're only willing to do so much that a county steps in and says, "Well, you know, if, if that, if cost is the only reason we'll do that, can we participate and we help?" And, and I don't know, Mr. Burke, if, if that's happened before ever or can that, can it happen or is it, it's state funds, it's state there, they do everything and we just get a little bit of input?
No, I think you'd, it would fall under the jurisdictional control, they're very clear in state law that, uh, when you're dealing with the trunk highways of the state, uh, they're separate, kind of like the interstate and, uh, there is no bonding or overlapping, so to speak.
I, you know, I, I think that's something that we need to always have in the back of our minds and consider because look at 34th Avenue, we've got the private sector, we've got the county, we've got the state, maybe a bit of federal, all involved in that project to accomplish it. And I, I don't, I'm not trying to argue with you Dick, but I, I, I think there would certainly be an opportunity that we could create some kind of a cooperative effort. And we talk about, we really talk about safety and 34th is, is huge in regards to safety, but I'm not so sure if it isn't kind of a flip a coin deal between this situation out there and 34th for overall safety, like, uh, I invite anybody to go out there like the hours that Tom said, me coming into town, if I come into a commission meeting at the wrong time, I can sit in that little median at the fireworks corner for everybody understands what I'm talking about and wait and wait and wait to get, get onto Highway 14.
Not to pass us on to our neighbors across the way, but is, that's in the city limits, isn't it?
I think borders.
Is it right on the, is that the border or?
I think so.
And my understanding is, um, some of the feedback they've received from the city too is, you know, or their concern is they're not residents of the city, they're residents of the county, but the concern is still for the residents of the county because it's the, their driveway is on both.
But it's to the benefit of all.
Everybody in the county's on that road, I mean, whether they live in the city or whatever, but.
Well, I, I think, you know, the, the state, as Dick said, it's a state highway and the state controls that function, function of that road and I, I think, you know, they have engineers that design these roads for safety and they have engineers that put them together and, and they're not going to just ignore a safety issue if they don't, if they feel it should be there, so I think all we can do is make the recommendation. I think the problem I see is there's so many turning areas out there, I mean, you know, there's, there's businesses out there, there's a lot of different things, there's 22nd Avenue, there's all kinds of places where people are making turns, so do you make a three lane with a turning lane down the middle, the whole length, which I can see being very, very expensive, or do you try to deal with every intersection? As you see in some of these, Highway 14, as you go out west toward Pier, you know, you, you see all of a sudden there's a turning lane, but then there's a lane that you can pass people on the right and that always makes me a little nervous and that guy, that person's in that turning lane and I'm going by at 60 miles an hour thinking, what if he changes his mind and decides not to turn? You know, so those are kind of dangerous, I think they, I think the, I think we need to leave it to those engineers, but just give our letter of recommendation that we think is a safety issue and let them figure out how to design it and what to do with it, because it isn't just one intersection out there, it's, it's a lot.
We have a motion in a second.
Do you have a comment?
Um, if, if the board approves or decides to go ahead with this letter of concern, then what I will do is I'll draft something up and have the chair and the vice chair just review it prior to sending to Pier if that works.
Sure, sure. One thing, you know, Dennis makes a good comment, it, they should have built a wider road when they build it, but Ryan makes a good point, it's a bypass, that's the reason and we built on a bypass, you know, so, but I, I agree with, okay, call a roll. Pardon?
Oh.
I think Commissioner Miller, did you not make the motion?
Well, I didn't, I suggested it, but I'll make that a motion and Commissioner Wyeth seconded it.
Just send the large?
Yes, to the DOT.
We'll wait for you. You okay?
No. I'm ready to have a motion, that must be. Ready now.
Okay.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Anything else coming up under correspondence that we need to address Stephanie or any commissioners? Commissioner Falcon?
The one correspondence that came in here, and Bob, you need to help me a little bit with, with came from DOT on this Twin Lakes thing again, this is just a notification that it's, it's in their plan and just, there's nothing, there's nothing we need to do about that.
Not at this time, what I'm going to do is follow up with the letter and, and the, that portion of Highway 81 is not controlled by Aberdeen, that's controlled down by Mitchell, the Mitchell District. So what I'm going to do is contact that engineer and see what their plans are on, on the equipment that's in the ground. And worst case scenario, this board may have to go to the water management board and request that they remove it, but we'll see, we're not to that stage yet. I want to see what DOT is planning on doing with it, because our permit was they needed to remove everything once it was done. So if all they're doing is, from what I read in the letter, they're talking about no build plans at this time, why, why should they leave that, those pipes in the ground? They, they should remove it and restore it back to.
Yeah, and I guess that's just for, you know, new commissioners and I, I mean, when we went through this whole issue of draining down Twin Lakes and gave them the, the temporary permit to, to put the pipes in and, and the intent was that when it was done, the pipe would be removed and the drainage is down and now all of a sudden they said, "Well, can we leave them there and, you know, just in case we need to use them?" And we felt, well, if there's a flood out there, there's no reason we'd take them out and try to, you know, so there's, and now they're coming back and saying, yeah, they're looking at doing something, but they don't know what they're going to do and we need to just kind of stay on top of that, that's my reason to bring it up.
And I've had some citizens ask me, "Are we going to let the pipe stay in the ground?" So we're going to at least look into it and I'll report back to the board and let the board help me decide which way to go with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Any other questions on correspondence? Abby? Life is good.
Life is good, I have nothing to report unless anyone has any questions for me or my office.
Okay, any questions for Abby? Okay, thanks Abby. Do we have our public notices? Commissioners, uh, where did I start last time? I'll start with Wyeth this time.
Okay, my social calendar was to go to the Banner going away party for England, Daryl England, it was pretty fun, most of you were there. Um, and then the courthouse, and I want to thank Stephanie for taking her evening out to host it on behalf of the county commission, that was very nice of her, John Mullingraff for being there also and, um, I can see Joel mentioned him also for his dedication to keeping the upkeep of the courthouse. And then, uh, March 6th was the township meeting, which we, I think you all were there. And then the, um, planning and zoning meeting and we got some things, a lot of variances and things and that's something to think about when we get this comprehensive plan and we need so many variants and we're, and we issued them all and, uh, because they were good variances, but maybe we're just a little tight on a few things compared to other counties and if we just changed our zoning laws just a little bit, wouldn't have so dang many variances and we'd be the same as the most counties, but, and we got a couple things that, or one thing that's going to be, may be a new twist that he's working on on a plot and on Highway 14 and it gets a little complicated and I'm not going to go into it until Roberts and Megan's done their research for it. Um, so that was it, planning zone, that's, I think that was it from that.
Okay. Commissioner Krogman?
All right, um, the 25th, uh, attended the retirement for Daryl England from Banner. Uh, 27th did the, was at the courthouse remodeling and also had to leave early to have a hospital board meeting there and they came up with numbers and provided their, their numbers and stuff too, so went over that. Uh, and I, and then March 3rd, I, uh, attended an orientation, uh, they have, with new members, they have an orientation and our appointee, uh, Jim Morgan, uh, attended that and I offered to do the same things, you know, and so it was good and it was a great learning experience and, uh, you know, I don't get to vote, but I'm, I'm learning a lot, so, um, but it's, uh, it was good and they opened that up for me also and got a lot of good information on the hospital board. Um, and then went to the township, uh, board meetings at the Swiftell on the, uh, the 6th and that was about it and then I have an ICAP meeting on tomorrow and I'll report back on that.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
On February 25th, I too attended the retirement reception for Daryl England and it was very well attended and we'll miss him at Banner. On February 27th, I had a domestic abuse meeting at four, we're busy working on job descriptions. February 27th was the open house at the newly remodeled courthouse, we had good attendance to view the courthouse and it certainly looks nice. On March 1, I attended the last legislative forum, uh, not much left that really affected counties. On March 6th, the annual township meeting at the resource center, the attendance was down a little this year, but that may be due to the bad weather that day. On March 7th, I was here for the annual weed board meeting, the attendance was not as good to that either, but it was always, it's always informative and the, it gives the township people an opportunity to talk to a commissioner if they so desire. I received, and then the, the last one was the call from the constituent on the mosquito spring, so I won't go into that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Falcon?
I have nothing to report except over the next, I've got five meetings in the next week, so I'll bring them on.
Isn't that the way it happens? You can go, you can go a couple weeks and not a whole lot to do and all of a sudden it's a full-time job, about 12 hours a day for a week. Um, this, uh, between the last meetings, I did attend Daryl England's retirement, representing the county, it was like the rest of you, uh, with Banner and Associates, very nice reception and, uh, the nature park out there is a beautiful facility, uh, what an addition to the community, so. Um, then of course, the town attended the courthouse remodel, open house. Uh, Tom, I, apparently maybe it was the same individual or maybe it was your observation, but I too had a compliment from, uh, one of the people that was taking the tour on how nice the courthouse looks and how clean John keeps it and, and how well-maintained it is, which is another credit to our staff and he needs to be thanked for that. Um, then of course, the township meeting and several of you have already reported on attendance there. And then, uh, the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference and I won't go into great detail, I mean, just a whole host of web seminars and workshops and, and speakers that we had. The two things, uh, quickly was, uh, one, resilience and it's pretty evident that, that from the federal level, uh, we're going to be, have to become more resilient and do things on our own. We've kind of known that, but it's becoming more and more evident as time goes on. Um, we'd mentioned a little bit earlier, the EPA actions and not only EPA, but some of the other departments, uh, they'll take legislation and they'll say, "Well, it's our guidance" and they start promulgating rules and regulations and got to be very careful because they can bypass the public input process. Um, and so, uh, that's why it's going to be important that we carry our message, uh, to the EPA on the small government or, uh, uh, small government, or small county advisory board. Um, the other one interesting thing is, we had a presentation, uh, to us from, uh, a former Senator Byrd and former Governor Huntsman, one's a Republican, one's a Democrat, but they are the no-labels guys in DC. And I think that was probably one of the most interesting sessions I sat through, uh, and there's about a hundred senators and representatives that are involved and it's nolabels.com and, uh, you go in the room and you, you have lunch and you talk about the issues and nobody's a Republican, nobody's a Democrat, you talk about the issue, just like we do at, at county government level. And you take everybody's ideas and see what kind of a solution you can come up with. Um, it was interesting to note, they said we're getting quite a few folks now that would like to join us, they said we're kind of screening them because we've got it figured out that some of them are there just for political purposes and they want to look moderate for their next election, but, but they talked about the key issues and areas that they, that, that they really focus on and it was interesting, none of them were the emotional issues, you know, gay rights, abortion, all of those things, they, none of that was brought up, it was all on governance. How do we establish a budget that's reasonable, that, that accomplishes the goals and satisfies the, the services that we need to provide to the citizens? How do we provide reason, adequate and yet somewhat efficient national defense? How do we properly fund the entitlement programs, social security, Medicaid, you know, those things? It, the, the core issues, the governance of the nation is what they talk about. When, with, really without that, now all of these other side issues aren't going to matter because we aren't going to have a government to function under, so. It's a very interesting concept. Um, then, um, we talked about budgets and, and some of those things. I found one interesting comment, um, from a county and, and I think there was more than one that do this. When they do their budget, they anticipate roughly how many dollars they have for discretionary spending. And so they take that amount of dollars and just say they got a half a million that would go to their discretionary spending and they actually have a citizen committee that reviews all of the discretionary spending requests. And then they come back, meet with the county commission and give their recommendations to the board. the county commission, and give their recommendations to the board. And I thought that was an interesting concept, they get the citizens involved in one, so if you've got five-hundred thousand dollars that you feel that is what you could have for discretionary spending, they've actually have got a citizen committee that reviews it, and then comes back to the commission with the recommendations, just something else, some of the things you pick up at a, at a meeting like that, from how people are doing business all across the country, so, and there's a lot more stuff, but I won't go into great detail on it, and that was it. I could just see Wyssett and Krogman taking part in a couple of those discussions. Anything else for the good of the order this morning?
If not, thank you one and all, declare the meeting adjourned.